I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
It's good to see everyone tonight. Go ahead and call the roll.
Trustee Guyer, trustee Spurling.
Here.
Trustee Baumann.
Here.
Trustee Youngerman.
Here.
Trustee Marisak.
Here.
Trustee Betzinger.
Here.
We do have a quorum. We're all here. Rolling into public participation, the first item, I like when we do the happy ones first, is introduction of Rosie, our new community engagement and events coordinator. Christina?
Good evening. I am excited and honored to introduce Montgomery's first community engagement and event coordinator, Rosie Boeing, this evening. Rosie comes to us passionate about community, events, and fundraising. Her primary focus in her education and career has been the nonprofit world where she's spent years fundraising and planning special events. Rosie is currently working her way towards her master's degree in nonprofit administration and in her latest role, worked for Lions International helping coordinate logistics for their international traveling five-day convention for thousands of lions across the world. Additionally, she spent seven years planning Schaumburg and Hoffman Estates Relay for Life event, raising more than a million dollars for the organization. She spent six years volunteering on the Village of Schaumburg September Fest, planning the committee, planning committee as a volunteer and focusing her efforts on fundraising, fest sponsorship, and revenue, which increased by 20% during her tenure. When she isn't planning anything, she's coordinating life for her family, spending time with her husband and her two young children, ages two and a half, and her newest Quinn is three months, and their new foundland. So, thank you for giving us the opportunity to welcome Rosie officially to the village. She is in her third week and we are so happy to have her.
I think I speak for the board that we are very excited about the ability to further expand in that department, you know, more professionalize what we're doing there, increase our sponsorships, community engagement, you know, really find ways to better connect with our residents. I think that we do a great job now, but there's always room for improvement and this is a step in that direction. So, welcome, Rosie. All right, also, moving on to item B, which is also something happy. According to Jeff, is the public hearing on the tax levy required to hold a public hearing before we take action? So, that'll open the public hearing. If there's any member of the public that wishes to address the board on the public hearing, now would be your opportunity. Does staff have anything to add before that? If we have speakers, then maybe we'll discuss it now, but anybody wishing to address the board on that topic? Okay. All right, we'll discuss it later in the meeting. And then, item C for public participation is our public comment period, two-minute opportunity for any member of the public to address the board. Is there anybody here tonight? Okay. Hearing none. Did anybody submit written?
Nobody submitted anything.
Okay. All right, perfect. We'll move on to the consent agenda. I'll read the items and entertain a motion for approval. Minutes of the November 13th Village Board Meeting, executive session minutes for November 13th, accounts payable through November 27th, the refuse report for October of '23, and the Village of Montgomery's scheduled meetings for 2024.
Sum up.
Any discussion? Call the roll.
Marisak.
Yes.
Trustee Betzinger.
Yes.
Trustee Guyer.
Yes.
Trustee Spurling.
Yes.
Trustee Baumann.
Yes.
Trustee Youngerman.
Yes.
And that carries six zero. Thank you. Into items for separate action this evening, the first item, ordinance 2046, adopting the tax levy for 2023, first reading, Director Maluski.
President Prawley, so tonight it's the first reading for the 2023 tax levy. The village must file our approved tax levy with both Kane and Kendall County by the last Tuesday in December. The estimated tax levy was announced at the November 13th meeting. So, tonight was the public hearing that was published in the Kendall County Ledger. Staff recommended the board announce an estimate, estimated tax levy of $2,616,387. The estimated property taxes include new construction and would amount to $154,627, or 6.28% above the 2022 levy. So, the figure that I just announced represented us taking the maximum 5% allowed under PTAL for 2023. The village can elect to adopt a lesser amount and options were given at the prior meeting. The '23 levy will be paid in calendar year 2024 and be part of our fiscal year '25 budget. As many of you may recall, property taxes are our third largest revenue source for the village behind sales and income taxes. Property taxes help fund the general fund operations, which include public safety, public works, and support services. There are also contributions from the village's general fund to help support the vehicle and equipment replacement fund, and I'm happy to answer any questions that the board may have. But we are looking for direction today on what you would like us to levy so we can present that for our second reading and ultimate passage at the next meeting.
Perfect. Comments?
I'll wait until we talk about it, but I'm going to tell you that I'm not going to vote for a tax increase. I'm only going to do new construction and, and, and property that wasn't fully assessed to start with. I'm not going to vote to raise taxes on residents who, in homes that have been here. It's not going to happen.
Okay. Doug? Comments?
No, I'm kind of staying in step with Steve on not raising the taxes. We've got a few things coming up that are going to impact the residents.
I'm in step with Steve on that. There's a few things coming up to our residents that are going to impact them in a larger way, and I don't feel this is a good time to, to do this.
I would echo those comments as well. I, I think we, as a village, are in a good position and I think this is something we can do without having to have too much worry at this point. So, I would be in favor of holding the tax levy this year.
Go ahead. Okay. No, I, I would say the same. The only question I had about it, and I would think if any John Q. Public are looking at these numbers, I asked Director Maluski, I'm like, elected officials, that's a big number. Who's getting all the money? So, I just wanted to, to bring that up and look at that number, and I got explanation that there are several items under that heading, by far of which your elected officials are not getting $265,000. So, that's the only comment I have about the levy.
How much is this, if we levy the full amount, how much is it per household on average?
We levy the full amount, we're looking at about $14.79 per household, and that's at the full amount. So, that's at the full 5%.
Okay.
And let me add, the reason that I feel that we're able to do this each year is because staff does a kick-ass job of tightening their belt and living within their means, and we wouldn't be able to do that if you guys, you, you guys are fiscally conservative, and I appreciate that. I wish other taxing bodies were as tight with taxpayer dollars as this village board.
Yeah, I don't, I really don't want to raise taxes either. The only way that I would agree to it is if we raised the rebate amount by the $15, and if people wanted the money, they could, they could apply for it and get the money. I've heard from several people, I've asked people before, you know, do you apply for the rebate? They said, no, we make good money, we don't need the rebate. We'd rather leave that money in the village coffers and let you folks do what you need to. With it, if the day comes where we need it, we'll, we'll put in a request. So, the only way that I would agree to it is if we increase that, that rebate so that people that wanted that money back would have an avenue to get that money back. Because $15, I mean, it's not a lot, but again, it is an increase in taxes and we really don't want to do that. But the reality is, at some point in time, you can only tighten your belt so far. I mean, we have to still provide services, you know, and what I, I always struggle with is what would we cut if we had to? Do we cut public works? Do we cut police? Do we cut hall staff? What, what services are we going to eliminate for the residents to, you know, offset? If inflation keeps going, if, if the economy takes a turn for the worst and, and revenues go down, we're not getting sales tax dollars. You know, the problem with this is being a non-home rule is, is we're pretty stuck. We're, we never have the opportunity to get this money back. We've, over the years, we've left, what, a million dollars on the table? So, that's a million dollars cumulatively that we've lost forever, that we can never get back. But I, I understand. I, I don't want to raise taxes either. Like I said, the only way I would agree to it is if, if we increase rebate by the $15.
And two things, I think you hit both of them, is we're able to hold the line on our levy like we have for how many years now? Better part of a decade. Because of the sales tax generation that we have in town, we have, that's been able to make up shortfalls in other ways. So, while times are good for, for our sales tax generators, and you could probably list, you know, who some of the top ones are, then we will be fine doing this. We're not putting that burden directly on the backs of our residents. We're putting it on the backs of folks that shop in Montgomery. The destination-based sales tax also helps with that, where we're getting a small percentage of your Amazon purchases. So, that's able to bridge this gap, and, and I think that that's appropriate at this time because of the economy, because of the market. But it has gotten much more expensive, you know, the 5%, the last year, but over the last 10 years to run a village. We see that every time, you know, we have contract renewals. We see it every time, as Steve will point out, when we bid new projects. So, I just hope that the residents acknowledge that we are attempting to freeze their, well, we're attempting to freeze our portion of their tax bill. It could still go up if their assessment goes up relative to everyone else, but we're freezing what we're asking for. And I do think people appreciate that approach, but we're only able to do that during, when times are good. Also, just for the folks that are in the room, about a decade ago, I don't know the exact year, we agreed with, with voters to implement a sales tax rebate. So, a, a portion of the sales tax receipts that we get can get rebated back to residents in, in check form every year. You know, all you have to do is ask for it. So, I would encourage folks to apply for that again this year. We do require that it is an opt-in so that residents, like trustee Guyer mentioned, and myself, and I would assume most of the board, who, you know, prefers to leave that investment with the village, can do that. So, while times are good, we're able to do this, I, I think at some point, we would have to get off of this, and I think we'll know when that is. There's your direction. Thanks. Yeah.
Okay. Moving on, next item is ordinance 2050, adopting a paid leave policy. This is the Illinois Paid Leave for All Workers Act. This is first reading. HR manager, Strico, is with us tonight. Thanks for coming.
Thank you, President Prawley. So, as many of you may know, this past spring, the state passed the Illinois Paid Leave for All Workers Act. It goes into effect January 1st, 2024. The village already does provide substantial leave to our full-time employees. We have made some modifications to the employee manual leave policy that will be discussed later tonight. This ordinance would adopt, officially adopt, that leave policy in compliance with the Illinois Paid Leave Act. It was the recommendation of council that we do adopt an ordinance to codify our leave policy, just to ensure our compliance with it. So, again, this is a first reading tonight. If there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer those.
And there's no material change in the time off?
No, so we're using our vacation leave policy to comply with this. There is a modification to add leave time for a small handful of employees who currently don't receive it under our current policy. So, there is a handful of part-time employees who will get one hour of paid leave for every, every 40 hours that they work. So, it will be a minimal amount of time that will be available to them to use for time off.
Perfect. Any other questions for staff on this? Okay. Anybody opposed to adding this to consent at a future meeting?
No.
Okay. Thanks, Megan.
Thank you.
All right, item C tonight is ordinance 2045, granting a variance from Section 9 of the Village UDO. This is at 1330 Hinckley Street, second reading. Director Abbott, anything additional?
Nothing additional. The ordinance before you is the same as was before you at the last meeting, so it does not include any sunset language. That was something that the board had discussed, but there wasn't a consensus on, so we did not include that in the ordinance before you.
Was I the only one that was interested in putting some kind of, I guess, sunset provision would be the correct wording for it. I was really hoping it would just run with the title, or the person on title. At some point, she sells the home, then the carport would stay. And I, I was hoping that we would just have it run with the owner of title. But if I'm outvoted, I'm outvoted. I know how that goes.
Yeah, I do. I do have some comments. I've, I was at the planning and zoning meeting for this, and I've been thinking about this and researching it ever since that meeting. And this is, this is why I've come to find out. So, the current zoning is our two-single-unit dwelling district. Comprehensive plan calls for a single-family detached residential, and this building is currently a duplex. It's not a single-family home. Under the finding of facts, it said that the structure will not be in direct view of neighbors, but it will be in direct view of neighbors. The structure is unlike other structures in the neighborhood, and it will be closer to the right-of-way than other structures on Hinckley Street, not compatible with the character of the adjacent other properties in the area. And this variance is not consistent at all with the, the comprehensive plan or the UDO or, or other land uses. So, based on, on those facts, I will be voting no on it. So, I don't, I don't think it's the right thing to do to, to put that. We don't have any language that covers carports, and we're kind of just lumping this in as a gazebo, just to make it fit. I think there should be covered on the UDO and revisited at that time. But I've drove by the house several times, and this is going to be so close to the, so close to the street. I just don't think that, I know two of the, the commissioners planning and zoning voted no for it. And, yeah, I've, I agree with them. I just don't think that that's the correct thing to do.
Good points. Any other comments from the board? I missed the conversation about the sunset. Is there somebody on the opposite side of that that would care to weigh in? I didn't watch the meeting. I apologize. I'm just going to say that aloud.
I'm fine with that language. I, I was fine with that concept of, you know, this is a, for a specific person, for a purpose, that really wouldn't be transferable to the next owner.
And that's, this, I can see our attorney starting to move, because that's usually not how we handle zoning and land use, but go ahead.
Correct, yeah. I mean, because we're applying the findings of fact in this case for what a variance is. So, if you find that it meets the variation, there would have to be a reason within those findings of fact that you would not want it to transfer to the next subsequent owner.
That we would not want it, or it wouldn't qualify?
That would, there would have to be something in the findings of fact that would justify making that distinction.
Okay.
So, are you saying that it will not transfer them?
No, as, as written, it would. It's, it's an approved use on this site then, forever, right?
Yes, because you're making the findings of fact that, you know, which apply to the property.
Okay.
Can you, staff remind us of our, the conversation that we had at the last board meeting? With what trustee Guyer and trustee Spurling said, is there going to be carports? Are they eventually going to be part of the UDO? Is there going to be language for that?
Yeah, so we're currently working on more amendments to the UDO, and so we have added that to the list to include in that. I mean, most of those changes are going to be related to electric vehicle, things like that. So, but we can, since we're already addressing it, we can add it to that. So, we are looking at language. This was something that was in our old zoning ordinance, and they were allowed inside or rear yards with, I think, a three or a five-foot setback from a side or rear property line, which is our standard for accessory structures. So, looking to kind of mimic that language and reincorporate it into the UDO. I think it might have just been an oversight at the time.
And if I remember correctly, the reasoning for this is because there's not enough property on either side for the carport, correct?
To get into the rear yard, correct?
To get into the rear, okay, okay. Thank you.
Any other comments?
I have one other, too. So, when this was built, was it originally built as a duplex, or was it a single-family that was converted to a duplex?
I believe it's always been a duplex, but I'll defer to the owner. At least when she purchased it, it was a duplex.
Had you purchased, it was a duplex?
I know this doesn't set, or does this in any way set a legal precedent? If we were to approve this variance?
Like, is the other property?
Yeah, if somebody, like duplexes on the, on the west side come in?
No, I mean, it's going to be on a case-by-case basis. So, anyone has the right to apply for a variance, but you still have to go through the findings of fact, and typically, there has to be something unique about the particular property that's applying for it that would justify granting the variation.
And if she had the room on either side, where it could be on the side or the rear yard, we wouldn't even be seeing this, correct? Because it would be...
Because our ordinance doesn't allow for that now.
Because it wouldn't be a variance.
Right. I mean, right now, the only way we can interpret it as being an allowable structure would be as a gazebo, and those are only allowed in the rear yard. So, even if there was room on the side to put it, the ordinance wouldn't allow it, and we would be before you for a variance for it to be in the side yard rather than the rear yard, so.
Okay, but once the UDO is updated and it addresses carports, we wouldn't necessarily, this would not be a variance because, or, I'm sorry. If the UDO was already updated at this point?
Uh huh. We would still be before you with a variance because this is in the front yard, and the way the code was originally written was for side or rear yards.
Got it. Thank you.
So, we don't have carports in the front yard, and we've never allowed them in the front yard?
Right, correct.
What happens, say my house? There's, there's no room on the sides, right? What if I want to come in and, and do a carport, and I say, well, I can't do it on the side because there's not enough room? I want a variance, I want to put a carport over my driveway. What prevents homeowners from coming in to do that if we grant this? And I guess I'm, I'm asking, Laura, I'm asking you pardon, but explain to me how we solve that.
Well, there's nothing, I mean, anyone can ask for anything, so there's nothing to prevent somebody from asking for a variance. But what it comes down to is whether or not you can meet those findings of fact. So, if somebody already has a garage, if they, you know, don't have something unique about their property that would prohibit them from putting it in the proper place, that wouldn't be appropriate to grant a variation. So, you'd have to go through all those findings of fact, and they would have to satisfy all of them, which, you know, the point of variation is that there's few properties that are going to satisfy those findings of fact.
So, what happens if somebody's in a two-bedroom duplex and they have another child, and they can't afford to move, so they have to convert their garage into living space? And they come in and get a permit, convert their garage into living space, and a year later, they come back and say, oh, I don't have a garage, I need a carport now? Because they don't have a garage. I mean...
Is that the unique aspect of this, that there is no garage?
Correct.
There's a couple of unique aspects with this when we look at the findings that we put out. And one of it is that there is not physically a way for there to be a carport on either side of the house. On the one side of the house, that's where the entrances to the units are. That's the front of the house. It just happens to be the side yard. The other being that there's not room to get a driveway then to the rear yard in order to access either a detached garage or a carport in the back of the property.
So, any house that's in this situation can come and ask for a variance then? And once we grant this one, we've got to grant the other ones. If, if it's the same situation, they don't have access to the back, they don't have room on the side, and they want a carport in the front because they don't have a garage, so we'll have to, we'll also have to...
It's, I mean, it's, depends on the specific layout of the property, too, and, you know, part of it is, you know, what intrusion are you having on your neighbor? So, it's going to depend on how the house is situated, how close you are to property lot lines. I mean, I think it's hard to say just because this was the reason that it would also apply somewhere else, because you're looking at a very specific property and the footprint of that property and the impact on those specific neighbors, which, you know, unless you have the exact same lot line, exact same layout, exact same zoning, you know, adjacent to it, I think you're going to be hard pressed to find the exact situation replicated.
Right. Well, because I can't think of very many houses that there's enough, other than maybe on a corner lot, that you have enough land between the house and the property line to put a driveway to your backyard. So, anybody in the middle of the block would probably be in the same situation. If they're in a house that doesn't have a garage, then, then they're basically in the same situation. And to trustee Youngerman's, you know, point, then, are we obligated to approve that, that variance? Because they don't have access to their backyard, and they don't have a garage, so they want a carport. Now, we've kind of set a precedent with this one. How do we, you know, how do we say no?
I think that's the point, is that the, the variance is not setting a precedent. The variance is identifying all those different factors. So, it sounds like we just have some disagreement with the planning commission's finding of facts. You disagree with, with some of those facts. But every situation is unique. Each lot, my lot's different than your lot, that's different than your lot, that's different than your lot. So, this is the first carport I recall coming before the board in my time here. So, I'm not expecting a run on carports, but each situation has to be independently, you know, we, we decide based on the, on the merits of that individual situation. So, I, I don't have a concern about it setting a precedent, because that's the whole, the whole point of the variance is that it's not setting a precedent. We have to meet a variety of criteria in order for something like that to be approved. It just, I, I think there's a, a level of disagreement with, with some of the findings of facts, is what it sounds like.
And the solution, if, if someone builds out their garage and turns it into a bedroom, well, you, you've created your own problem, right? You've created the hardship. It's your, I'm not going to grant you a carport because you, your 25-year-old kid won't move out, right?
Right. I'm not talking about a 25-year-old kid, but the hardship existed when the lot was purchased, is what I'm saying. So, I mean, it was, it was existing. It, it wasn't like something happened and forced the homeowner into the situation. The situation existed. And trustee Betzinger is correct. I just don't agree with the finding of the facts. I don't think, I, you know, for the reasons that I, that I stated, I don't think that, I don't think it should be approved because the finding of facts is, just don't prove out to me.
So, and, and that's respectful. Is it safe to say that, at least in my opinion, there is no garage in this building? And homes without a single car garage in Montgomery are very limited. And I know we looked at that downtown in the past. So, that this exact situation from happening again, whether there's a legal precedent or just the implied precedent that we just approved something, the likelihood of that happening is low, I would, I would assume. And in this situation, we're providing an avenue for a resident who has no other covered area to get to their unit. I just want to be clear that it's not something that I really envision us getting into more or even allowing by right, carports in front, side, or rear. I, I don't know how that works, but I don't think it's something that, that generally is seen as a, as a enhancement to the community. So, I wouldn't want to see us get in the carport business, but I don't think we're going to have a run on carports either, so.
And with the UDO update, I mean, there'll be very specific standards that then can be crafted and applied. The problem right now is we're applying the closest definition... The problem right now is we're applying the closest definition because it technically fits under that definition. But when it's formally addressed, you know, then the board can adopt standards that it is, you know, believes are universally appropriate, if at all.
Got it.
So I think that'll also present, or prevent any precedent, you know, effect, because really, that would only be the timeframe until that UDO update is passed.
And that gets back to one of my, one of my comments, too, is why are we doing this before we have language? Why don't we just wait for the UDO to be updated, address it, and then...
I would assume just timing. UDO update requires a public hearing. And I'm sure we're not ready.
It's, it's a little from column, from that, it's also the fact that I'm not planning on writing a UDO that allows carports in the front yard, so we'd still be in the same place that we are and would be going through the same process. So it seemed, it behooved to just move this through the process, and, and we'll address that when we're doing other code amendments.
Did, I was looking at the Plan Commission report. Did staff recommend approval, or did...
For variances, staff does not make a recommendation. It's our job to uphold the code, so we do not make a recommendation when it comes to variances.
I don't have a problem with the, the carport. I think it's far, a variance is a variance, so I don't have an issue with any future requests coming before the board either. I don't want the, my position as a board to be an obstacle for making life easier for the residents of the village. The only concern that I would have on this, in looking at the aerial viewpoint, is that all size restraints have been taken into consideration, and the village knows exactly where this structure is going to be in respect to the driveway for the neighboring duplex, and as long as this does not provide a burden or a hardship on the other resident of that, that duplex. That would be my only concern with, with the structure.
So yes, the area that's being, going to be covered with the carport is for this unit's parking area, and will still provide access to the sidewalk that goes to, to the two units' front stores.
But making sure that if this is one double-wide or two-and-a-half-car-wide driveway and the, the mounting brackets aren't over on the other driveway, and now we're going to get the neighboring duplex owner in and saying, hey, this is infringing on my space, even if it's this much, as long as we make sure that we, you make sure that everything fits within those parameters, and again, it's not creating any burden or hardship on the, that shared driveway as well. I just want to make sure that that piece is covered along with this variance.
Is this for, when I'm looking at that aerial photo, it looks like it's for one space. Is it for one space or for two? One space, one space, okay.
Is it a carport, it's just one?
Four, and then two, I, well, other than the, the one private housing carport, that would be, that's a half a space where the other ones are double. So it's only going to be over one vehicle? It will, it'll be over one vehicle, okay.
But technically, each resident of the duplex would have like a spot for like a two-car garage if there was a garage door put in.
I'm looking at the aerial photo, and there's something in the backyard, what's, looks like vehicles in the backyard now? Looks like vehicles in the backyard now on this aerial photo?
There's two ships in the backyard, and there's boats in the backyard.
They get there from an adjacent property.
I beg your pardon?
My understanding is they got there from an adjacent property.
Access to it?
That's how they got access to get back there and park them.
Yeah, I was just wondering, how'd you get the boats back there without driving through somebody else's property?
That's exactly what they had to do.
Yeah, okay. Any other comments on this? Questions?
Nope.
Is there a motion for approval?
Motion to approve.
Oh, go ahead. We got a motion by Teresa and a second by Bowman. Go ahead, Debbie.
Trusty Spurling?
Yes.
Trusty Bowman?
Yes.
Trusty Youngerman?
Yes.
Trusty Marisak?
Yes.
Trusty Betzinger?
No.
carries five to one. Thank you. It's approved. All right, let's move into item D, Ordinance 2048, Establishing an SSA Number 46 for Charis Center for Commerce. This is a waiver of first passage on the second. Director App, do you have a quick summary of that?
Yep, so this is our final step in the process for adopting the backup SSA for the Charis Center for Commerce. This is the new one out on, off of Orchard Road, the former Shearing property. So once this is approved, we'll have to get it recorded over at the Kendall County Recorder's Office, and then that will go into effect. Again, it's a backup SSA.
Any questions?
Some moved.
Second.
Go ahead.
Trusty Youngerman?
Yes.
Trusty Marisak?
Yes.
Trusty Betzinger?
Yes.
Trusty Guyer?
Yes.
Trusty Spurling?
Yes.
Carries six to zero, thanks. All right, item E tonight is Ordinance 2028, Establishing SSA Number 47. This is Orchard 30, waiver of first passage on the second. Director App?
Yep, again, similar thing. This is a backup SSA for the property there at Orchard and 30. This is the final step, it'll get established once it is recorded with the Recorder's Office.
Move to approve. Trusty Spurling?
Yes.
Trusty Bowman?
Yes.
Trusty Youngerman?
Yes.
Trusty Marisak?
Yes.
Trusty Betzinger?
Yes.
Trusty Guyer?
Yes.
Carries six to zero, thank you. Item F is Resolution 2023-033, Approving a Plat of Roadway Vacation. This is Charis Center for Commerce, portions of Charis Way.
Yes, so we approved the final plat of subdivision for the Charis Center for Commerce, Commerce as Unit 1 back in June. After the plat was recorded, Revago and the developer made changes to the Revago site plan, which caused some changes to the alignment of Charis Way. The attached plat of roadway vacation vacates the portions of Charis Way that have been modified. The village engineer has reviewed and approved the revised plans and verified that the plat does reflect those changes. So once this is recorded, the vacated area will go back to the Revago property.
Some moved.
Second. Go ahead, Debbie.
Trusty Youngerman?
Yes.
Trusty Marisak?
Yes.
Trusty Betzinger?
Yes.
Trusty Guyer?
Yes.
Trusty Spurling?
Yes.
Trusty Bowman?
Yes.
And that carries six to zero, thank you. And then rolling right into Resolution 2023-034, Approving a Plat of Easement Grant and a Plat of Easement Vacation for Charis Center for Commerce, Lot 1, and portions of Charis Way.
Again, because of the changes that were made to the Revago site plan, this did impact some of the stormwater and utility easement areas. So this is vacating certain portions of the easement and then granting new easement areas based on those changes. Village engineer has reviewed the plans and verified that the plat reflects those changes, so the appropriate areas are being granted as easement areas.
Stellar.
Some moved.
Second. Trusty Youngerman?
Yes.
Trusty Marisak?
She, she already did, she got him.
Yes.
Trusty Betzinger?
Yes.
Trusty Guyer?
Yes.
Trusty Spurling?
Yes.
Trusty Bowman?
Yes.
I feel like we are uniformly quiet tonight. Does anybody else feel that?
Yes.
Everybody. I've been trying to speak up, maybe the whole thing's down. Maybe it's a turkey, I don't know. Okay, that carries six to zero, I believe. Ordinance, the next one is H, Ordinance 2047, Renaming Certain Street Within the Village of Montgomery, Change From Charis Way To Nemets Way. This is waiver of first passage on the second reading. Do you have anything to add?
Nope.
Basically says it?
Basically says it. It won't take effect until after 30 days after notification to the post office and the county's office.
I move to approve.
Second.
Trusty Spurling?
Present.
Trusty Bowman?
Present.
Trusty Youngerman?
Yes.
Trusty Marisak?
Yes.
Trusty Betzinger?
Yes.
Trusty Guyer?
Present.
Okay, and that then carries six oh. Correct? All right, moving on to item H, or I'm sorry, I, tonight is Approval of a Contract Extension With PISO Associates for Natural Landscape Maintenance Services in the Amount of $229,000 and change for a period until April 30th of 2025. I can't tell you how much I appreciate you getting this to us long before this, you know, they get into the spring or the winter cycle, so go ahead.
Thank you, President Rowley. So the Village of Montgomery is responsible for maintaining naturalized basins throughout the village. Many of these basins are funded through special service areas or SSAs, while a small fraction are also managed and funded through general fund money. The current contract, as you have mentioned, does carry till April 30th of 2024, but in order to establish our pricing for oncoming fiscal years, that's the reason that staff is bringing this recommendation in front of the board tonight. So obviously, staff's recommendation is, emphasizes the increases in labor and increases that we have seen over the past several years. This contract was originally approved in 2020. So obviously, we feel it's in the best interest of the village to move forward with accepting these two individual one-year extensions with PISO and Associates for the next two years. So if there are any questions from the board, I am happy to answer them at this time.
I've got a couple of questions. I, I can't, even with my glasses, it's hard for me to read these numbers, but, so we're in the middle of, of a contract with PISO?
With the base contract, correct.
Historically, the cost of maintaining these basins should be going down, correct?
In some instances, yes. In some instances, not as, not, not the case. So where they're typically not the case are in areas like Huntington Chase or Belmeray, where the contributions to those SSAs were minimal because the development hadn't fully taken place. So those basins are further behind their, their appropriate level of where they should be when they were established. So in those instances, they're catching up, in, in that still catch-up phase. There are some that are coming down, but then there are also natural effects that happen as well that can contribute additional costs, such as erosion of the banks due to prevailing winds out of the west that can cause erosion on the, on the east banks of those, some of those that have, are more open to, susceptible to those winds. Also, varmints that cause issues with the embankments and other things that can cause additional costs. So in some instances, yes, but some, no.
Overall, I think PISO's had these contracts for, what, 10 years?
More than that.
More than that, yes.
Are, have they, are they trending downward?
The, the cost for, for PISO?
When we approved this, and we discussed this 10 years ago, part of this was they're supposed to become less costly to maintain as the years progress. Is that trending in the right direction?
Again, in, in most of the basins that were established and had full contributions throughout, yes, I would say that is the case. Now, that kind of is counterintuitive, because again, labor costs and costs of performing these services, you know, go up yearly, but when you look at it from an overall, the basins are in better condition that require less stewardship.
In the, kind of the other side of this, too, what you're getting at, is these are required or encouraged by the King County Stormwater Ordinance. So they would pretty much exist whether or not we were maintaining them or not. It would just be whether we were letting everybody's HOA maintain it, which I know Lakewood Creek does a fantastic job with their consultant to do it. But having, you know, having worked in this realm where no village that I work in is willing to take any basin or have anything to do with any basin, and then they leave it up to HOAs that could be professionally managed, or maybe they're not someday, I appreciate being able to tell folks that we maintain our basins, we ensure that they're operating appropriately, and we're doing everything to keep the costs appropriate and keep pushing down on those costs. And for, from where I sit, and I, I think everybody would agree, PISO over the last decade-plus has done a phenomenal job of maintaining these basins. If you need clear evidence of that, go look at the Police Department basin in the fall. I mean, that's pretty much the best one that I've seen, so at any rate, that's all I had to say.
And I've, I've worked with PISO as a sub, I've known them for almost two decades. Outstanding contractor, but I also want to make sure that the taxpayers...
Yeah.
And the, the HOAs and SSAs and SAs and all that are getting their, their value, so...
Yeah, and we've bid, and the full disclosure, we have bid this out...
Correct.
Recently, I know we did, and then I think one or two times previously since I've been involved. To keep everybody honest on this, there are other firms that can do, you know, a quality job here as well, so we are...
Yeah, we did get numerous bids. In the last request for proposals, we did get numerous, I want to say four off the top of my head. So again, well diverse in the numbers. PISO was the low bidder in that instance, so...
So when does this contract extension expire?
So this would be for two, the two additional one-year contracts. So it would be expiring in April 30th of 2025, if the board elects to move forward tonight.
There's no increase in these extensions over previous years, correct?
No, the increment, so the increment that, that's established here was established with the base contract. So again, that's why staff feels it's advantageous with the cost increases that have incurred over the last several years to move forward with this, because likely bidding it out, the new pricing coming in would be, would, would reflect those increases.
Ten-four. Any other questions?
I'll make a motion to approve.
I got one more question. I'm sorry.
Real quick, we got a motion and a...
Second.
Second, but I also had a question.
All right, now let's see, questions, go ahead.
So here in the portion where you talked about where some basins, the cost would go down, some of them would go up, rodents and so forth, what's the difference in the pattern from what we're seeing on the last page of the graph where alternate, it's like an alternating year, 175, 239, 175, 239? What's happening in that alternative year that bumps it up?
So the, great question. So the, the alternate year where the cost is higher is a burn year. So we burn those basins off to a naturalized burn every other year, is what we currently do. And if you look at, coincides also with our, our landscape contract for our mowing. So we alternate our mulching, one-year mulching, one-year cultivating. So in the same instance, those costs tend to offset. So that way, our SSAs, as well as our general fund, kind of keeps that baseline of the same, so we don't have increment going up and down each year. So we've used those to offset each other. When one year is a cultivation year, it's a burn year, vice versa, so...
That was the same question I had.
Solid. Do you want to ask Steve's question, too? Did you have another one?
No, I knew, I knew that it was a burn.
Nice.
I'll ask him. Is this guaranteed on pricing and materials, or are we going to have to wait for mulch for three years to be delivered and...
I'm not aware of any mulch shortages at this time.
Let's see, what about their trucks and...
Injust, man. All right.
Go blue, Steve.
You call the roll.
Okay, Trusty Guyer?
Yes.
Trusty Spurling?
Yes.
Trusty Bowman?
Yes.
Trusty Youngerman?
Yes.
Trusty Marisak?
Yes.
Trusty Betzinger?
Yes.
And that carries six to zero. Thank you all. All right, the last item for separate action is Ordinance 2051, Approving the Purchase of Real Estate. This is the Montgomery Overflow Project, and the pin is listed there. This is waiver of first passage on the second. Laura?
Yep, this is just one of the parcels of land that the village has sought to acquire for the overflow project. A copy of the contract is attached, as is the plat of survey. With this ordinance, we do need a two-third vote of the corporate authorities to approve, and that will authorize us to move forward with the closing, which we hope to have completed by the end of the year.
So, move?
Second.
Any discussion? Okay.
Trusty Marisak.
Yes.
Trusty Betzinger.
Yes.
Trusty Guyer.
Yes.
Trusty Spurling.
Yes.
Trusty Baumann.
Yes.
Trusty Youngerman.
Yes.
And that carries six to zero. And just full disclosure, this is a parcel of land that we negotiated the sale of, you know, willingly. As part of that, it wasn't a take or anything like that. Okay, I'm going to flip this around real quick, if that's okay, because we got folks waiting for Mayfield. So, can we do Mayfield first? Okay, so moving to items for discussion, we'll jump into, into B first unless there's an objection to do the Mayfield presentation, and would welcome Engineer Ott.
Thank you, President Brawley. Here to talk to the board and everyone about the Mayfield Drive traffic calming update. We had a resident come in, I think, what, two meetings ago or three meetings ago with some concerns. So, looked at some options to present to the board to try and solve some of the problems or, you know, get a solution, basically. So, the agenda, we're going to recap the traffic calming, the results of what the current temporary measure did, go over the proposed options, go over what the next steps would be, and then answer any questions. So, just a quick recap, the temporary road closure that's currently installed was installed on July 22nd, 2021. It does allow authorized vehicles to cut through, which is listed on the sign there, fire and ambulance, police, school buses, postal service, and Public Works employees. Before the closure, the counts were, on the west side of the closure were 1,700, yep, go ahead, sorry.
Sorry, I didn't want to interrupt. Can you just minimize that, that guy? No worries. Thanks.
Is that better?
Totally.
The ADT before the road closure on the west side was 1,764 cars. After the closure, that went down to 1,361 cars. In August of 2022 is when we did that, that count. On the east side, it was 2,111 vehicles per day. That went down to 1,257 vehicles per day. So, quite a big decrease, especially on the east side of the closure, which would be the single-family side. And then we did a count of 14 days in 2022, and average cut-through traffic was 85 vehicles at that time. Now, one thing to note with that 85 vehicles is it does not distinguish what is authorized versus unauthorized. Just kind of throw that out there. These were the locations of where the traffic counts were done on the west and east side of the closure. So, kind of getting into our proposed options, we looked at six options with a couple of 3A, or two, a couple of options on two, two of them. So, option one would basically be, leave the temporary partial closure that's up with authorized vehicle access, so status quo as it stands currently. Option 2A would basically do, do a permanent partial closer, so it'll look like it does now, but it would be its permanent state instead of the Jersey barriers that are currently out there. Option 2B would be to do the closure, but put in a gate. And then option 3A would be to completely close the road with no authorized vehicle access and provide a turnaround between the single-family and multifamily homes. Option 3B would basically be to put in a, and I'll, there's details on these. Option 3B would be to do a full closure with a turnaround between the commercial and residential area, so by the Aldi. Option four would be to install speed tables at various intersections on Mayfield Drive and not have any closure. Option five would be basically to go back to the way it was pre-2021. And then option six would be any other considerations. There was one consideration that President Brawley had brought to our attention, and then possibly any other ideas that the board may have to investigate further. So, option one would basically be to leave, leave it up the way that it currently looks. Now, the pros, I think there's been a significant vehicle reduction. It did reduce the amount of vehicles that are out there, which was one of the primary concerns during this process. It was obviously quick and easy to set up. It's got a, you know, a low cost, you know, basically Public Works set up, two Jersey, Jersey berries, orders, some signs, and, you know, it's up. The cons, obviously, there is still a decent amount of cut-through traffic, especially when, you know, police are not present. And then the other concern is that it does not provide a vehicle turnaround. I know some residents have concerns about vehicles turning around in their driveway if they do decide not to go through the closure. Option 2A would be basically to put in the permanent version of that closure, which would be curbing as opposed to the Jersey barriers with additional signs. This would provide the same pros and cons, just with a, you know, a permanent solution, basically.
See, I messed it up by asking you to move that thing.
Option 2B would be to put in the permanent closure with the curbs, but provide a gate, a permanent gate that would be locked, that would, I assume that the village would provide, you know, emergency access keys to emergency services as required. This would provide the significant vehicle reduction that we have now. This would prevent all cut-through traffic, would allow still emergency vehicles to come through, but there would be, you know, a little bit of effect because they're going to have to get out and unlock the gate and close the gate back behind them. And then it does not provide for any vehicle turnaround. And this is just a location map of, you know, kind of give you an idea of where the closure is at on Mayfield Drive. Option 3A would be to put in a full closure with turnarounds at the current location. The pros are all the, the same as before, you know, significant vehicle reduction, no cut-through traffic allowed. It would provide a vehicle turnaround. The cons would be there are some utility relocations that would need to be done. We'd have to relocate a fire hydrant. We need to relocate some storm sewer potentially. It would not provide any emergency vehicle access, so there'd be one way in and one way out at both locations. And then the approximate cost is listed there. Then option, so here's an aerial, what it looked like. I would say the other concern that I have in this location is just, you know, you're, you're putting in a hammerhead in a residential area, and, you know, we're staying within the existing right-of-way, but it, it doesn't really fit in that way, and it, it's pretty tight, as you can see there on the aerial. Option 3B would be to provide the same full closure, but in between the single-family and the commercial area. The pros are the same as option 3A. The cons would be there, there are some utility improvements. We need to do some storm sewer improvements. Again, no emergency vehicle access. And then that traffic that currently is driving, you know, roughly 1,100 cars that drives in the single-family unit is now going to be driving through that location at the multifamily unit. So, there is going to be an increase in traffic from what the multifamily units see currently because all of those trips would be going down Mayfield Drive now instead of going east to Orchard. And then the approximate cost is listed there. And this is kind of what it would look like with the pavement in between. The pavement in between here would be, be removed, and then this would all become grass.
Engineer Ott, is, is that then between the residential and the commercial?
Yes, yeah. So, the residential, the residential ends here, and this is Aldi right here.
Okay, thank you.
Option four would be to provide raised crosswalks at various intersections. This would increase pedestrian safety and reduce speed at the crosswalks. It doesn't do a lot. It would probably deter some vehicle volume because people don't want to drive over that all the time, but I don't think it's going to have the same reduction as what the closures have had. Typically, what you have when you have speed humps like this is you typically get speeding between the crosswalks. And then, you know, the residents that live on that street, you know, typically have to drive over that. That could be frustrating for some of the residents, and then it does make snowplow activities difficult on the Public Works folks. And that would basically just be putting those in at every single intersection that are out there. So, there would be five locations. And then option five would be to remove all traffic calming. You know, the pros and cons are listed there. You can argue if you agree with those or not, but some people would be happy to revert it back to original traffic patterns. Some people wouldn't. And then obviously, there's going to be no impact to volume reduction or vehicle speed associated with that, that option. Option six, the one option that President Brawley had brought up was possibly doing a permanent closure at Mayfield Drive and Concord, which we would have to further investigate to see if there's enough room there. There's a potential to go into the parcel to the, probably the north, I guess you would say, or northwest, across from the residence basically, and put in maybe like a offset cul-de-sac or some way to turn vehicles around there, basically. One thing I would say with that is you kind of have the reverse of what you have with doing the closure at the, between the residential and the commercial is that you have, now you're going to be increasing the amount of traffic that's in the single-family area because all of those people will be driving out to Orchard as opposed to the direction that they're driving now. And then certainly happy to hear if anyone has any other considerations you'd like us to look at or discuss. Kind of the next steps, as we discussed all, you know, our, the results would be to determine a preferred permanent option on how we want to move forward. You know, the idea, I think, would be to try and get this included into this year's upcoming infrastructure road program. It's a good year to do it. It's a non-MFT year, which would make it a little bit easier to do the construction because we don't have to have I.DOT review. So, that typically goes out to bid in end of January, early February. So, that kind of gives you an idea of, we would like to try and get that included in those plans. And then that would result in, by bidding it out with that project, that should result in getting better, better unit prices by lumping in with a bigger project, which would hope drive some of those costs down. So, with that, I'm happy to answer any questions or comments.
Yeah, I had, I had a couple of questions. So, I appreciate staff bringing this back to us. I think my entire time that I've been on this board, the Mayfield Drive traffic situation has come up year after year after year. And I think when we implemented the, the interim solution, the temporary solution two years ago, it gave, as Doug always says, to steal a term from him, it gave those residents along Mayfield Drive their, their homes back, right? Their front yards, the safety. It has changed drastically, in my opinion, the feel of both neighborhoods. I'm not there every day, but I do cut through, cut through there. I do run through there on, on feet. And I see people blowing through there every time I run through there, but it has drastically improved the situation here. The, the option that I had suggested on Friday, I, I don't think that anybody, none of the five people that I talked to, and then the four up there, loved that idea. But I just wanted to make sure that we've looked at that. I think, my opinion right now is that the status quo is that there is a closure that a certain percentage, very large percentage, 97% of folks in that area abide by that. And we're not there 24/7, nor do I want to commit our police department in perpetuity to police this one situation when we have a whole village to protect. So, I did have one question. I like the options that you looked at. Is there a way on 3A, so that's the full closure with the two hammerheads, to still provide a gated fire access? Because the one thing that, that would be paramount for me is to ensure that we've done nothing to detract from life safety in that area. I know that the fire district, the building they're coming from, has great access to both sides. I don't know if that would be appropriate to spread those out and put a gated, but I think, I think it's time that we make a decision to make this a full and permanent closure at that location.
Yeah, so I, I think what we could do is we probably could put mountable curb in, something that a, a fire engine would be able to go over fairly easily, but would still deter, you know, the majority of vehicles.
But could you gate it?
I don't see why you couldn't. I don't know that you would, I don't know that you would have to, but I think you could, yes.
I think if we don't gate it, we're going to be back here in, in a year or two.
If you put a mount, a mountable curb there, anyone with a Jeep is going to go over that thing. Anyone with an SUV is going to go over that thing.
They can. It's possible.
So, I, if I had a Jeep still, I'd go over it just to try it.
So, the permanent closure idea, although I like the idea, I think we have to gate it because we've just had conversations about the folks out by the police department and putting in a second access point because they have one access point in and out, which is exactly what we would create if we don't gate this. They'll have one way in and one way out. That's it. And again, from a public safety standpoint, because we're also dealing with the Marbury thing with same thing. We're trying to avoid that because when that accident happened, they were locked out of their neighborhood for six hours. So, I think it's critical that we have that option to be able to open it because, again, in an emergency situation, we could definitely open that gate and allow residents to get into their homes if they, if the issue was further east or further west.
I forgot about that accident. There, you're right. There was an accident at Mayfield and Orchard or something that, yeah, it would be nice to be able to open that if there's ever a situation and say, go this way, and then close it. Can we go back to, to 3A?
Yeah. You want the aerial?
Yes, please.
Okay.
On these hammerheads, is there a way for us to soften those out so it looks more like an oval type of, of cul-de-sac? Where, where there's not vehicles that have to pull in and back up, where they can kind of swing out and, and turn around?
Yeah, I, I mean, unfortunately, I don't think there's room really to do the oval, you know, circular turnaround. You know, the hammerhead, the reason why we chose the hammerhead is because it's, to me, it, it's the least amount of movements to get a car to turn around. You turn in, you back up, and you can pull out. There's not really room in specifically that area to be able to do anything different because.
Cul-de-sac bulb is like 120 feet wide, I think.
Yeah, I mean, we only have 66 feet of right-of-way.
That's the only reason why we can't do a cul-de-sac. It's too, the bulb is too wide.
And there's a drive.
To get a truck to turn around.
Oh, you're right. Yeah, there's a driveway right there. Okay. I like, I like this option with a gate. What would the gate material be made of? I don't want some plastic tollway gate that's going to get knocked out in two weeks.
I mean, I think it's something we'd have to review with staff, but I would think, what came to my mind was like a gate like they have at Stewart Sports Complex, like a metal gate.
Correct. That's what I'm thinking, too.
And this type of access is not, I mean, this is not something earth-shattering or new. The fire district likely has one that they've approved before. I've done them for multiple projects with an OX box and.
So, my question was regarding this gate, and so, as was stated, priority for me is to be able to have emergency vehicles get through this area. Is there, I'm, well, I'm sure there's a way. Can you please investigate a way where if we have a fire engine coming through for a house fire, where it would, the gate would almost work like a garage door opener, where they would have something in the truck where it opens, where nobody has to get out and unlock it? Now, I like the idea, if we have to detour traffic, somebody has to go out there and unlock it. But when we're looking at the potential of lives being lost, if we could have something a little more automatic to get the fire services or ambulance, whatever it is, through even faster.
Yeah, I've never done one of those before.
I mean, I'm sure they're out there.
Well, I mean, we have the sensors on the traffic lights. It'll change the traffic light, so that's similar technology applied to.
I mean, I'm sure it's going to cost more money to do that, but I would like to see what that would look like and what the cost would be. And I'm assuming this would be funded out of our non-home rule set, sales tax. IRP, thank you, that that's where the money would come from. But that, for me, that's the priority, is emergency services being able to get through and get through fast.
Yeah, and that's discussion with the fire district to see how, if, and how an OX box would slow them down because that's not our priority.
I mean, I spoke to chief coroner prior to this, let him know we were having this conversation. And he says, you know, he did not want a permanent closure with no access, but if there was a gate, he was satisfied with, you know, with that.
Yeah, and I would agree. I don't, I, I want them to be able to get through. I don't want to come, like, completely shut off access, but I want it for the emergency services.
Yep. Perfect.
I like 2B. The only thing about 2B I don't like is that we're necking down the road. So, I guess I'm like, between 2B and 3A, I, I just don't like the hammerheads because, you know, once, once this thing is closed and everybody knows it's closed, we're not going to have an issue of people turning around. going to have an issue of people turning around. Because Google Maps and everybody and all the, you know, navigations are going to pick up that traffic's not going through there and it's a closed road. So navigation will not be sending people down as a, as a through street. It's, I, I don't know how Public Works would plow that hammerhead and where they would put the snow to allow people to turn around.
Well, if you don't know, how the heck are we supposed to figure that out?
Right. So I'm just saying, if you have a big snow, it's an issue. And, you know, and what I do like about, you know, 2B without the narrow down, just leave the road as it is, put the gates up, and then when Public Works goes through to plow, they could open the gates, plow curb to curb, and then close the gates when they're done and leave. So yeah, there may be a period of time during the snow where a couple of people may sneak through, but I think if we leave that full width of access, it'll be easier for Public Works to plow it. And then if there is an emergency for emergency vehicles, they'll have the room to navigate the full width of the road and not have to worry about a neck down.
I, I would also think if we, if we went forward with option 2B, that we would probably put up additional signage at Hagaman and Mayfield just to further alert people that the road's permanently closed. Put up a sign, and I would say, we would probably put up changeable, I would recommend that we would put up changeable message boards warning people probably a week or two before the closure was going to fully take place, to start the education to prevent that turnaround. I think on the west end, because you're so close to Roxbury, there's enough time to see that there's a gate, sorry, make that turn.
Yes.
But the concern would be on that east side, just doing additional signage probably to try and reduce that turnaround traffic.
Right.
So you want us to put a message board out explaining that the road that's already closed is now really closed, so they don't go through it?
Yeah, we're not joking. It's, it's closed.
For real this time. That's what I was going to say. Okay.
So 2A and 2B are a little behind. I'm, I'm not in favor of any total permanent road closures whatsoever, especially when we're close to where the proposed gate could possibly be. Any house one way or the other that needs emergency services that is not going to be able to get it because there's a closure and delayed time, that's on us. So whatever is there, whatever is there, I think needs to be accessible by emergency responders. And if it can be remote, as Trustee Spurling suggested, I think that would be option one. Not, I mean, I think that's, if you're going to put money in an investment into this, then do it and make it as easy for police and fire to come in and out as it could possibly be. And making sure, I did have a brief conversation with Chief Smith today that he informed me that legally we're not allowed to photo enforce there. But I also want to make sure that we have exhausted all enforceable options without doing a permanent closure because we're, we're making this investment for, what was the number, 80 some cars that go through that closure per day? Subtract out school buses, postal, Amazon, whoever that is, you're probably taking a dozen or so off. So we're making this investment for 60 citizens who can't obey simple traffic laws. I want to make sure that those 60, 70 people that we are doing everything that we possibly can to deter that very small portion before going out and spending tens of thousands of dollars to permanently close this road, which otherwise we wouldn't have to do.
Okay. Did you guys comment? I can't remember. Would you like to?
No, I, I consistently appreciate you guys coming out from Mayfield. And this is a, a conversation that surprisingly, even though it's two years ago, still happens frequently. I, I still have multiple people, because I live in Lakewood Creek, right there, that consistently say, I can't believe you guys closed that road. And I just stop them and I say, I think it is one of the best decisions that this board has ever made because you folks have your homes back. I drive through, not going through, but I drive down, and I see kids out on their bikes. I see people pulling in on their driveways, families hanging out in front of their houses. That didn't happen two years ago, three years ago. You couldn't put your kid out on the sidewalk because there was a chance somebody was going to run off the road and kill him. So I appreciate your guys' persistence. I mean, Rob, you and I met with Chief Myers over at the PD probably five years ago. So I appreciate your guys' persistence and understanding as we go through this process. But I'm a, again, I think, I like the permanent closure and I like the gate idea so that we don't completely cut off access, which we've already lobbied against in other areas. So why would we create that same situation here? So.
Okay. Steve, did you comment? I can't remember. What was your?
I've commented all the time.
What was your number?
I'm, I'm fine with 2, 2B or not 2B. If we go to 3A or 3B.
2B or not 2B. Make up your mind.
I'm fine with 2B or 3A. In, in either option, we need a gate. The question is, if there's some sort of remote control or something that access that makes this gate how do you solve the idiot that's going to go through and try and rip that sign off with their car, or with, rip that gate off with their car? How do you solve that? Is the gate going to be beefy enough that they're not going to get through it, or it's going to cause significant damage to their car?
I think that's going to solve it.
Well, if it's a, if it's a, if it's a movable electric gate, it's probably not. If it's a locked gate, it's a bigger deterrent.
It, it's got to be one of those tube steel reinforced with the, the arm that comes down into bollards type of situation. Otherwise, the idiots that go through this are going to continue to go through it and they're not going to give a damn.
Yeah. Okay. There goes everybody.
I would, I would question, you know, the, that fact that I think if overnight some idiot ran through or tried to attempt to run through a gate, that there are probably enough people right around that gate with some sort of Ring Cam or camera system that are going to be able to find the person that, that did that. I, I mean, I mean realistically, and if they're so, I mean, I don't see that being a huge issue. And if they are, then, then yeah, we're going to find them and there's going to be violations and it's going to probably be the last person that-
There was a guy that tried to go down Griffin on three wheels. And it was a four-wheel car and he only had three. So-
Well, I mean-
You can't fix some of that.
Thank you. Say it.
Yeah, I don't want to say it. Because you know what? We use the words idiot and stupid here a little bit, but no village resident would ever do that. It must be a neighboring resident that, from a different town, that was trying to come through. So-
Must be Oswego.
Really? And I wasn't going to say that either.
I'll say it.
So to, to, to kind of summarize for, for village staff, what I, what I feel is the majority of the board is a 2B or 3A with a gate or a movable gate. Work with the fire district and all the agencies and design it and include it in the IRP for next year. Sound, sound delightful?
Yeah, thank, thank you for the direction.
So the question is, is do we want a hammerhead or not? I just don't want to move all the utilities and go through all that expense with the hammerhead.
I mean, I'm with you on that. I would leave it to village staff to figure out what the best design is. Work with the fire district to see how easy or hard either one is. I think they're number one, frankly, in this. But I, I see merits to both. I'd let the design team sharpen your pencils and make it happen. I don't normally do this. We've got four residents here from Mayfield that had planned on speaking. You don't have to, and I'm certainly not asking all of you to come speak unless you have something to add. But if you, if you do come down on the microphone, I'd love to hear you.
While he's coming down, I'm going to say one more thing. You know, again, we're, we're making a great deal of investment and change for the acts of a few. And anybody who knows, who sees that sign coming either way, that it's local traffic only, it is a street closure, I'm really not in favor of doing hammerheads and turnarounds and turnabouts down there to make it easier for people who, at this point in time, know that that road is closed. For the occasional out-of-town person that comes through, I'm, I'm sure it's going to be an inconvenience to a driveway or, or to it. I'm sorry for that. But I'm not in favor of making it easier for violators to, to come back out.
And I think that's my only-
And moving utilities and curbs and-
Sure.
And everything else, I'm not in favor of going that far.
I think that's my only reservation about that is, I know where people are turning around. It might be your driveway or the driveway on the other side of the street, on the north side. South side, maybe, not so much, as Chris pointed out. That's it. It's just probably perpetually people turning around in your driveway. If it's avoidable, maybe we do that. But again, I'd let the design team kind of look at it.
No offense to your driveway at all, but, yeah.
Go ahead, Rob.
So, yeah, my name is Rob. I'm at 2366. And like, like Doug had said regarding our kids being out there, one of our neighbor's kids that, they've already moved to a different house now, literally almost did get hit and almost did get killed. So to me, there's no dollar amount that would value that. You say 85? I don't agree with that at all. I'd encourage you to come out and take a look at their, uh, look at it and stand out there and count because it's more than 85 cars blown through today. I live here and I can tell you that.
And where does the 85 number come from? Is it a guess?
No, it's data. 14 days.
No, no, no. We had a counter out there that counted cars for 14 days.
Right.
And that was an average, correct?
Yeah.
That was a while ago.
That was an average, correct?
Yeah, that was the average.
Average of the 14 days.
Certainly the, the data would support when school's out, there's definitely more cut-through traffic. Because I think you have, you know, younger people who want to get, go get food at Jimmy John's and Walmart and stuff like that. But those four, but, and that was in 2022. We don't have, you know, we can go get more recent data. At that time, that was when we, we did the count. So it, it could change.
Yeah. I, I, yeah. And I was going to say as well, it's been a while since traffic studies were done. So there's something to be said there. My biggest thing is, is that the people that are the ones doing this, they don't care, like to everyone's point. Like they, they don't care that they're breaking the law. And quite frankly, they may get a ticket and do it again, right? Because it's there and it's open. It's like, hey, come on through. You're not supposed to, but, but you can come through. And, and that's the mentality I think a lot of these people have. And when they do it, they now are aggravated about it, and they're going to speed up and slow down and cause more issues right there. And then that affects more people like, like Rob and some of the people that live closer to the actual closure versus myself. I'm right in the middle where it goes basically directly south, where people just nail on it and go. And then you know when someone's speeding because you can see them hitting their brakes when they're going around the corner. You don't need to hit your brakes to go around either corner where I'm living, if I'm looking to the north or south. Eight out of 10 cars are hitting their brakes, which means they're already speeding to begin with. Now you add to the fact that they can't get to their residence or wherever they are 10 seconds quicker, they get all aggravated. And it's just, it's a human nature thing to do. I mean, everybody's gotten aggravated driving around. I don't see how, and anybody could be affected by that. So I just wanted to add that.
Thanks, Rob.
Thank you.
Hi, good evening. My name is Rob Van Hethoff. I'm at 2391 Mayfield. So I'm right by that closure. I just wanted to take the opportunity and thank you all for, for listening to this again and again. Like you said, it's been coming up. I, I personally never thought of the gate solution. I think it's a fantastic solution. I think I would gladly put up with two or three people driving, you know, turning around in my driveway to go the other way for the option of having that road closure and having, as Doug would say, the neighborhood back, right? That would be a fantastic thing. So again, I just wanted to take the opportunity to thank you all for, for putting this in consideration and, and taking an interest in this neighborhood. Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
And I will add something about the traffic. So the night we were doing the Halloween decoration contest, I had several nominations. One was right next door to Rob that night. This is about 6 o'clock at night. So I stopped and talked to him. Rob, what I talked to you for about 15 minutes that night? And five cars? Five cars in 15 minutes went through that. And there was a, a batch of cars that came from both directions at the same time and sat there and looked at one another. Well, what do we do now? And they were all jockeying to try to turn around. And, and that's when I realized the, the problem is bigger than what we realized. It's, it's just 15 minutes, five cars blew right through that, 6 o'clock at night-
Yep.
-on a weekday. So it's, it's definitely an issue.
All right. I think staff has clear direction on what to go. And would it be accurate to say that we'll include this in our IRP for next construction season, which would likely be over the summer?
Uh, yeah. Yeah. Typically, construction starts in May, ends in September. So sometime in that timeframe.
All right. Sounds perfect. Thanks. Thank you all. Appreciate it. Good. All right, moving on to, oh, I almost skipped the HR manual. After all of that, and I'm so excited about it, too. Should have tested you just to see if you would say anything.
All right. I would let it slide. All right. So in your packet, you have a redline copy of our employee manual. As the cover memo states, it's been about two and a half years since we've done a full revision to the manual. Many of the updates that are proposed in there are related to labor law updates, such as the Paid Leave For All Act, which we discussed earlier, updates to the Family Bereavement Leave Act, Child Extended Bereavement Leave Act, and a couple of others. There is also some clarifications to current policies in place. One of the goals with the employee manual is just to make it a really user-friendly resource for employees and supervisors to go to if they're looking for information on certain practices, procedures, policies. So I really wanted to make sure our updates clarified some things, just to make it more user-friendly. A couple of the additional proposals in there include a Spanish language proficiency pay to reward employees who are regularly using their Spanish language, language skills in the course of their work to serve our residents. And then we also added a fitness facility usage policy to address proper usage of our new facility at Public Works, as well as the police facility, which we do not currently have a formal policy in place for. We would like to bring the manual back to the December 11th meeting for approval by resolution, but I am happy to answer any questions that you have now.
Awesome. Questions? Any more questions?
I'm, I'm happy to see we, we eliminated the term Palm Pilots under Workplace Search Policy, so.
Solid. All right. I was just looking for definitions real quick. I don't see them. So, okay. Do you need more time to take a look at this? Or is it okay to add this to consent? Probably not. We'll do it for separate action at the next, at the next available meeting, so.
Great.
No problem. All right. Thanks. See, I skipped that just for that. Figured it would be longer. Okay. Moving into newer unfinished, I do have one tonight. I'm really not looking forward, honestly, to, to the announcement. As everyone in this room, I'm sure, is aware, Trustee Betzinger has submitted his resignation from the village board on, on excellent terms. He is, it's not my news to share, but has been taking on a new role with the Swing Line Park District. I am very excited about that. I'm also very sad to see him go. I may have told you guys this before, but when I was a kid, he was my first boss. So getting to work with him on this board has actually been a delight of mine with most, you know, the board here. And then I, I know our staff as well. So your leadership on so many items will be missed. I know you're not going far, but your service to the village will, will, will be remembered here. So, thank you. And we have a fine picture here of the board. We'll take a picture with everybody after this. To that end, effective at the end of this month, we will have a vacancy on the village board. The, we will be posting that, and we will be encouraging qualified applicants from the village to apply, to send their interest in a cover letter directly to my attention. So that will go out tomorrow or the next day. Anything else that's maybe more exciting?
No, just a, just a public thank you to Tom. Appreciate you. Always appreciate your perspective, and I've enjoyed working with you yet again.
Yeah, I think it'll be a loss. You, you definitely bring a very grounded perspective to the board. And I'm glad to see that you're going to kind of take that level-headedness and that leadership role at the Park District. And it's, it's great that it's close, that you're still going to work hand in hand. There are a lot of great programs that are offered through the, the Oswego Land Park District, and I'm sure you're just going to enhance that and even improve it, you know, tenfold over. So congratulations on the new role.
Congratulations. You're going to be sorely missed on the cool side of the village board.
On the cool side.
So.
I was just glad that I was here to witness the President Brawley referring to Mr. Betzinger as his elder in a roundabout way.
I mean, we were both young, but I was a wee lad. I mean, we were both young, but I was a wee lad, that's for sure. I looked over at Tom and I said, "Did he just call you old?"
Yeah.
But Tom, it, it has been a, a great pleasure to work with you and help guide us and teach some of us some different perspectives on being on this board. So, I appreciate all of that. And you can come and volunteer at the fest if you'd like to, but your daughter definitely needs to come back, because she is awesome. She is a great volunteer, so thank you.
Thank you very much. It, it's been an honor to serve on the board. I think anybody who serves as an elected official, regardless of their interests or quality of their contributions, it's a, it's a hard role to fill when you're trying to take into account, in, in this instance, twenty thousand residents with different interests and objectives and ideas and thoughts and how, how a community should work. So, I commend each and every one of you for giving me the opportunity to agree with you and to disagree with you at different times, as we have had different opinions on things. Your work's really important. And while I'm excited to start a new adventure, I'm a little sad to, to not be able to finish my term. The village is in a really strong position because of the work you guys do and the staff. It's, it's been very enjoyable, from plan commission to the, to the board. And who knows, one day, maybe I'll be back to run again at another time, but I'll certainly be around to volunteer and help out. But thank you very much.
We will put you on the plan commission, see how you do.
It's a huge win for the Oswego Park District. I can say that as a lifer, you know, somebody who's been going only exclusively to your park district. So, hopefully you remember that next week. All right. Anybody have anything else? You can see future meetings there. Our last meeting of the year is set to be December eleventh. Okay, no executive session. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Moved by Trustee Betzinger.
Second.
Second by Youngerman. Go ahead.
Trustee Betzinger.
Yes.
Trustee Guyer.
Yes.
Trustee Spurling.
Yes.
Trustee Bowman.
Yes.
Trustee Youngerman.
Yes.
Trustee Marisack.